We'll call the October 8th meeting of the Vashon Island School District Board of Directors to order here at seven o'clock. And may I have an approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Vote.
Before we do that, I would like to recommend we amend the agenda to make the V E S P C B A a discussion item with no action as a first read tonight, which we will put on the October, if I am 14, 82nd meeting for approval.
I'll move.
So I second that or second the approval of the agenda with that change.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, that real time.
Wow, Joe, that was awesome.
Look at that. He's getting really good at this.
Thank you, Jody.
All right. All right, with that done, then we now go to public comment. And tonight we're trying out our new opportunity to have some live comment. If you signed up by four o'clock for that, and we also have some letters. So I will let Slade go ahead and lead us through this so we get everyone heard.
Great, and thank you very much for our public for attending this evening for sure. And we are changing things just a little to allow the public an opportunity to offer a live comment. If you're interested in future meetings, you can, Jody will send out in the board announcement, board meeting announcement to sign up. And so we do have three members of the community who use that form that we sent to sign up. And this, this is our first time using this, we'll proceed accordingly. So we have two, two people who filled out the English form and one person who filled out the Spanish form. And the first person I'll call on your name, and then if you could just unmute your button and then say your name, and then you'll have three minutes to offer your public comment. And so the first public comment is from Dominic Jovanovic. Okay. I will just offer probably two more times Dominic Jovanovic. If you are attending this evening and would like to offer your live public comment, please unmute, identify, and then share your public comment with the school board. One more.
He just might not be on yet, maybe, maybe we can give him an opportunity, another call at the end, just in case he's not on yet.
Sure, and then the next public comment comes from, or live public comment comes from Kimberly Flack. If you are attending the meeting, please mute and identify, and then offer your public comment to the school board.
This is a big success.
I know. Kimberly Flack, if you're attending the meeting tonight, go ahead and unmute and give your public comment. Okay. Our third public comment. Obviously, we need to probably communicate a little bit better what the purpose of this is. Comes from Beatrice Munoz. If you are attending the meeting this evening, you can unmute and give your public comment. More call for Beatrice Munoz. She indicated she wanted to speak to the board about the opening of schools, so. Okay. I will move on.
Let's just call for those guys. Yeah, let's just call for those guys at the end once the letters are done.
Sure, absolutely. So our next public comment comes from, let me get back to the right screen. Comes from Barbara Gale. I will read the entire letter to the board. It's date, October 8th, 2020. Dear school board member, I am writing after researching how the current plan V S D schools November 9th may impact our community. My research, some of which I will share below, leads me to conclude that the Vashon Island School Board must vote no on the superintendent's proposal to reopen the elementary school November 9th. A no vote will safeguard the well-being and health of our children, staff, and faculty. This morning, Seattle's mayor talked about the likelihood of reopening schools and period, and concluded King County still in phase two and the increased COVID cases in King County. That is unlikely the schools will reopen for face-to-face learning until next year. On October 1st, Pierce County Health officials advised the P U O P School District to halt the plan for in-person learning until the county sees a decline in new coronavirus cases, saying, "We are concerned about the recent upward trend of Pierce County's COVID-19 14-day case rate, which is at 68 per 100,000 population, including a six-day lag today. The rate has increased 12 out of the past 14 days. If the same pattern continues, we expect the rate to go above 75 per 100,000 with a six-day data lag sometime next week. If we surpass that threshold, Pierce County will move back into the category of the COVID-19 activity level per the Department of Health's decision tree for the provision of in-person learning to Tacoma News Tribune. Because the New York Times reported today that the Washington State's COVID cases increased 18%. And yesterday, King County reported infection numbers that increased from 53,000 to 72,000 with transmission numbers increasing to 1.6. We are facing a similar issue as Pierce County. Starting school before there is a decrease in COVID cases is irresponsible, especially since many epidemiologists predict worse times ahead. The Washington Post reported this week that infectious disease experts are warning of a potential cold weather surge of coronavirus cases, a long-fearred second wave in infections and deaths, possibly at a catastrophic scale. Researchers assume the crest would come closer to when fall gives way to winter. My feeling is that there is a wave coming and it's not so much whether it's coming, but how big it's going to be, said Eileen Klein, an epidemiologist at Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine. A model produced by the University of Washington's Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation published Friday forecasts a most likely death rate toll of 1,907 by the first part of November, roughly double the COVID toll. Under the I H M E forecast, the numbers would continue to rise into early December, peaking at more than 200,000, 200, 2,800 deaths daily. King County Public Health Director told the Tacoma News Tribune that based on the level of COVID transmission in our community, everybody should be clear that they're taking risk for COVID and that so much of it is people who are asymptomatic, so we can't assume there's no COVID because people are happy and healthy around us. He argued that we are entering a very challenging time, both locally and nationally, with respect to COVID. He said, "I implore people to step back for a minute, to remember what works, and to rededicate themselves, do everything they can do as individuals and what we can do as a community to minimize the potential for a great degree of illness and suffering this fall and winter. I too share this view that we ought to see how the winter months progress before starting school face-to-face and having to cancel it due to illness and outbreaks. The facts do not support reopening the Vashon Elementary Schools. Further questions arise when you look at the kinds of guidelines and plans needed to reopen schools safely. The board should ask the following questions to guarantee there is a solid plan in place. As Ed Source argues, school officials should make decisions about school reopening based on available data, including levels of community transmission and their capacity to implement appropriate mitigation measures in schools to protect students, teachers, administrations, and other staff. The following are just a few of these questions that must be addressed affirmatively to ensure the safety and health of our students, staff, and faculty. Is there enough personal safety equipment for staff, teachers, and those families that require it? Has the building ventilation HVAC system been addressed to meet new COVID-19 standards based on air circulation? Will extra help on buses ensure seating for the social distancing of students? Will extra staff be available to take temperatures daily upon entering the building? And will enough thermometers be available? Have specific plans been made for actions if a child has a temperature? Has specific plans been made in case of an outbreak of flu that could compromise? What plans for testing students, staff, and faculty for COVID-19? And the permissions required have been made? Have specific plans been made in case of a positive test for COVID? What plans have been made to address the fact that many children have not received new vaccines to keep their immunizations current? Has cleaning and disinfectant supplies budget been increased? What plans have been made to disinfect classrooms between cohorts? What plans have been made to monitor restroom disinfecting during the day? Will hand sanitizer stations be available in each classroom? Will water fountains be dismantled? And how will water be provided for students? Is there hot water available for hand washing in all lavatories? Have partitions been added at school secretary and other high-contact desks? Will desks be more than six feet apart, given new research data and the contagious spread of COVID-19 that suggests six feet is inadequate to control the spread of disease? Has the water system unfleshed in each building due to non-use? Is there a backup staff plan? All these are questions that need to be addressed before reopening should occur to mitigate risks. If each of these is not addressed, the school board, the board should not vote, should vote no on the proposal to open schools November 9th. According to Ed Source, opening schools for in-person instruction involves taking risks at every stage of the process, even when schools follow local health guidelines. When children's health, along with the health of everyone else in their social circles, is at stake, what's on the table now even more clearly is whether it is worth taking those risks. I believe the risks during the incoming, upcoming months and urge the school board members to vote no sincerely, Barbara, Ph.D. And she offers her email. That is public comment. And I appreciate Barbara for offering your comment. I will actually share some response to you in my superintendent report. And I appreciate those three members. If those other three members, Dominic, Beatrice, or, let me get the name right, Kimberly, would like to offer their public comment right now live, please unmute, and the board would welcome your public comment. Okay, so it looks like we'll have to probably recommunicate our directions and hopefully the intent of the live public comment and so that we can ensure that we all understand what we're trying to do here. Thank you, Reagan.
Okay, thanks very much. Always a little rough when you try something new, but we'll have it figured out next time. All right, and now we're on to the superintendent report, and Slade, go ahead with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, community, for attending this evening. Once again, I'd like to open my board superintendent, my board report. I will make a land acknowledgement. Once again, I would like to recognize and acknowledge the indigenous people of this land, the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. At this meeting, we pay respect to the Puyallup Tribe of Indians and to their elders, past, present, and emerging. Next, I'd like to move on. I'm gonna kind of stand up here and proudly represent Vashon Island School District. This, I'm wearing our, our Amt t-shirt today. I felt in the spirit of honoring our orcas, Mustangs, and pirates. So this is a t-shirt that I received when I, when I was invited to be the superintendent, and I just love wearing it. And, and, and I'm honoring today our E-CAP kids and especially Lilia and Laura, who are true stards of the Vashon spirit that I'm, that I'm representing tonight. And I had the distinct pleasure of watching Lilia and Laura lead probably five or six students today with, you know, all, they were on a, on kind of a rope, six feet apart, with little handles on it, with kind of, it looks like they were either going outside or coming back from the outside. Just a lot of crazy kid noise, and I absolutely loved it, and it was the favorite part of my day. So anyway, I'm just letting you, letting the board know, getting some Vashon spirit out there. Secondly, tonight, I would just like to reaffirm or just encourage everybody once again to get out and vote this evening. I'm gonna bring up some deadlines for folks, just to remind myself and others. Election Day, starting October 16th, will, will be the start of the 18-day voting period. And so ballots are mailed out and accessible voting units are available at voting centers. And this comes from vote.org. And on October 26th, online and mail registrations must, must be received eight days before Election Day. So if you are intending to register, you have to register online and mail before that day. And if you're in person during business hours, anytime before 8:00 PM on Election Day. And then, of course, November 3rd is the general election where you can deposit your ballots at the library with their, with their voting booth there. So I just want to encourage everybody to get out and vote. This is a very important election, and this is our chance to do our civic duty, so. Next, I would like to recognize October as our National Principals Month. And so, gosh, what can I say? Our Vashon principals and assistant principals, they create hope for each and every student in their buildings by leading culture, systems, and learning. I would like to draw to everyone's attention that principals, side by side, work tirelessly every day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysis, facilities managers, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy initiatives. They work collaboratively, collaboratively with all the staff to ensure the students have the, gosh, the best learning experience possible and a strong sense of belonging in our school district. So October is a great month to honor and recognize the contributions of all of our district principals and our assistant principals. And I was sharing with a mentor of mine today, a former superintendent. He asked me, "How was I doing?" And the first thing that came to my mind was how fortunate I was to have such a strong leadership team. And so I just want to remind our community and our school board the importance of our leadership teams at our buildings and just to recognize that we're very fortunate to have this exceptional group of folks. That's John Hodgson, Rebecca Gertzel at the elementary school, Greg Allison at the middle school, and then Andrew Gus, as Mr. Gus, and then Danny Rock at the high school. So I thank you very much for those principals and the assistant principals for their leadership in our buildings. The next point on my report this evening is I'd like to welcome, and Reagan, you and I have the opportunity to do an orientation with our two newest student board representatives, and they are Ella Yarkin and Mead Gill. These are exceptional students. Ella comes to us with quite a bit of experience. We probably know her maybe most from her cross-country accomplishments, but she has also participated in the Vashon Island Council. And, and Mead comes to us with lots of experience being on the Riptide. He is the son of Aristie Gill, our elementary school teacher. And so I sent them a congratulatory email today, welcoming them to the, to be our next student board representatives. It's always wonderful to hear from our students. They will attend the student advisory board to the superintendent, which is a monthly meeting. And they will report out on that at our board meetings, and also they'll be reporting out on kind of what's happening in our schools. And so hopefully, they'll be able to attend either, I know most likely to be virtually, our day on the hill, which Zabet and I will be attending in Olympia in the upcoming legislative session. And so I'm looking forward to a wonderful partnership with Ella and Mead. And I just want to say I appreciate both of them for putting, putting in their applications and wanting to step up into this leadership role. And lastly, not right before my upcoming events, I'd like to just kind of, COVID-19 has put some extraordinary pressures on the school district and therefore the school board. And so I'd like to give a thank you to our school board members. During COVID-19, all of you have been responsible of our school district. And the, the cadence of communication in a non-pandemic has been probably tripled or quadrupled or even more than that. I'm very thankful for our one-to-one meetings every week. Some of you, I'm briefing daily, and I know that not, this hasn't been easy because each and every one of you have family commitments, professional commitments. And so I just want to extend the, a small amount of appreciation while I'm sharing appreciation for our other staff that, for all that you've been doing and, 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 and I'll continue to keep the board informed and updated on a regular basis. I know this takes more time during these, you know, the constant shifting guidance and, and information that comes in, it feels like hourly, but I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate the time that you've been spending with me, especially in your volunteer role. And lastly, gosh, let's just talk about some upcoming events. Tomorrow, I've sent a link to you. Hopefully, you'll be able to attend our teaching and learning forum, the morning session with Dr. Tanisha Brandon Felder, who will be guiding a racial equity workshop for all of our district. I've extended that invitation to our friends and family, racial equity partners. And I'm looking forward to an entire day of, of, of just extending our learning on not only racial equity, but suicide awareness and prevention. And then a special thank you to our collaborators and our staff who are going to be in the afternoon working on extending our learning in the tech environment. So it's gonna be a wonderful day of learning. And hopefully, as many board members attend, I know not always work commitments and other things come up. Hopefully, you'll be able to attend this morning, tomorrow morning. On, next week, on the 13th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, we'll have our board retreat. And then October 22nd, we'll have our next board meeting. And then out there in November already, we are talking about our WASD conference. And so Zabet and I, I believe are scheduled to attend that, but I would like to invite others if they would like to join. It will be virtual. It's situated in Spokane, but it will be virtual. And this is a great experience for any board member to both network with other board members in the state, but also extend their learning and, and kind of understand how districts, you know, are tackling certain challenges and certain problems. And, you know, I just want to invite any, anybody else who would like to attend. If you're, if you're interested, please let me know, and Jody and I can get you signed up. So with that, that concludes my board report.
All righty, I got bounced out of the meeting, and now I've returned just in time, apparently.
Okay.
So thank heaven. So now we're on to board member remarks, and Toby, you're on the top of my view tonight.
All right, hey, nice to be here tonight, thank you, and good to see everyone's faces. I don't have anything particular other than in recognition of, of Principal Month. I recognize that everyone really is carrying a big load right now and operating 24/7 and guided by our district values, principally focused on the, the health and education of the kids. And I've seen that despite the stress, that focus, and that care, and the love coming through is, is powerful, and I really appreciate that. It's hard enough. I can't imagine if we had strain in that part of the organization. Really grateful that we, that we're all together on that. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Toby. Bob, you're next.
I have nothing to report or remark.
All right. How about Spring?
Hi. I just want to say I'm very pleased to hear about the student board reps. That's really exciting, and I'm looking forward to their engagement and contribution. And, and I'm really appreciative of every community member and parent who does our surveys, who, who contacts us and, you know, takes the time to let us know, express what their concerns are, what their questions are as we consider the, the plans for moving towards hybrid. And I really, I think that there's no guarantees, but I do feel reasonably confident after being really involved in getting to talk to Slade and read the C-19 Safety Handbook and just that the detail, the level of detail in the Safety Handbook that I think, as Slade said, is, is really sort of like the foundation. It's a critical, important document, and that's gonna help us think about every detail possible to ensure the safety of our students and their families and all the teachers and staff and the community at large. And that it, that we are taking a position of being really cautious and, and really just taking it baby steps so that it'll be, it'll be relatively easier that if anything, if there's any indication that we have to, we have to shift gears and pivot, we can do that with, while really minimizing risk as much as, as possible and mitigating risk. So it's really tough, and I really appreciate that whole team involved. But, you know, I just, I don't want to offer false reassurance, but as being in this position, and I can't speak for my fellow board directors, I think we're reading that, we're following it closely, we're paying attention. And I really feel as though the team that's involved in making these decisions is being very cautious and very smart and doing everything possible they can to protect the children and the community and the staff. So that's what I wanted to say.
Great, thanks so much, Spring. Zabet?
Hi. Hi, I'm glad to see that there are 44 people on this call. I kind of wish there were more because I, this is a, this is gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of information here. That's Spring you're kind of alluding to. I just quickly, I want to say that, that Hillary, Emma, and I had a very nice little meeting the other day about mascots. I don't know if everybody on the call knows that there was a quick at the very end of the meeting last, last time it came up about thinking about looking at the high school mascot. So she and I talked about that. This is, this is not, the board hasn't talked about this, so no boards for it, no boards against it. Well, I'm for it, but, so just, we're very neutral, just want to say that. Anyway, it was a great conversation. If people have questions about that, you can either get ahold of me, Reagan, Slade, or Hillary, I think. Anyway, so that was good. I'm really looking forward to tomorrow's racial equity conversation, so that, so I'm excited about that. And I'm really glad you sent that out to the friends and family group. And also, I'm so psyched about Ella and Mead, that I'm like, oh, yes. So very exciting, really good seniors, they're all good seniors. It's a fantastic class, but these two are really good. So I'm excited, that's all I got.
Great, thank you, Zabet. So yeah, the, the board is interested in public input on the pirate mascot and the potential of changing that. Yes, no options, feelings, timing. We're, we're looking for your input on that one. So to pirate or not to pirate, that is the question. All right, so from there, oh, I guess I should remark. All right. So from there, oh, I guess I should remark. I do have a little remark. First of all, I wanted to just second what everyone was saying about pushing our fantastic principles. They have weathered storms in the district, and this may be the biggest storm we've had to face, but they're doing a beautiful job with it. And they're very trying and uncertain circumstances. And their leadership is greatly appreciated. And I also am very excited to meet our two new student board reps. I'm always appreciative of hearing the students' voices. So I'm glad we have some to fill those roles now. And I look forward to hearing what they have to say. And then my last thing is to remind everyone that we're doing the last call for funding Everyone Count. And that's going into its third week now, I believe. It's a fantastic program involving pretty much anyone on the island who wants to participate, but a great number of students are participating. Some of the teachers are using it as curriculum. So it was started with some generous donation, but it wasn't fully funded. We've had some had matches for Windermere and the Bashan Schools Foundation has met the Windermere match. So there's at least 5,000 there. But additional funding will ensure that all kids who want to participate are able to participate in this program. It goes on for 10 weeks. So pretty much right through Christmas time. And there's a different activity every week, and the kids are submitting their data to become part of a, I think it's a national study, is that right, on regional biodiversity. So it's an exciting thing to be a part of. If you'd like to help make that happen in these weird times and it helps support an outdoor learning activity, go to the Bashan Schools Foundation or Bashan Nature Center and think about donating. Doesn't have to be a lot, a little, every little bit helps. And the kids and the staff there, Bashan Nature Center and the Bashan Island School District will really appreciate your support. So with that.
Reagan, I just want to back up in the sorry, in the opening items, I I I'm reminded that next week, Pi Partners in Education start their phoneathon. And so I sent out an email to all of our all of our family members in our community, but just encourage you to participate in that. And so and an update on Everyone Counts, Bianca Perla, let me know, they have over 800 participants right now. I know.
Wow.
I know. So thank you very much to Windermere, Bashan Schools Foundation, and above all, Bashan Nature Center.
Are they all on the island, all 800 of them?
I, you know, I don't know that for a fact. But probably a majority of them, if not 80 to 90% of them, I'm sure. Yeah. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, it's obviously a successful launch for that. That's great to hear.
Right.
Okay, now we turn to some business items here. So I'm having trouble seeing that I didn't have my glasses on. So I apologize. That says instructional materials committee update. Stephanie Spencer is going to lead us through this.
Buenos dias. Thank you for having me here tonight. Yeah, so October is actually a pretty busy month for recognitions and honors. We're actually in the final week of Latinx Heritage Month, which I'm sure many of you know, runs September 15th through October 15th. It's also Disability History and Awareness Month, and it's Bullying Prevention Month. So a lot going on in October. So I'm here tonight to give you updates on the instructional materials work that we are pursuing this school year, as well as an update on our English language learning program. So Jody, let's go ahead and start with the first slide. Each year, I like to put in front of you the adoption cycle. You usually see this twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. It's always in draft. It's basically a roadmap that kind of helps us to stagger our adoption cycle so that there's no not a massive amount required in any one year. And to do it in a way that it flows building by building. So you start at the elementary, then the next year, middle school, and then the following year, high school. What I try to do on this document is track when the adoption is made and also give the target date for the next adoption cycle, which is typically about seven years. What we're trying to stay on. It might float to eight. Each adoption is a little bit unique. Additionally, I try to track the a rough estimate of what the cost is so that we can be planning when we're going through budget cycle on what that looks like for us. So it's there. You can review it. If you have some questions, we can talk about it a little bit later. Okay, the materials that we're looking at for this school year, we're looking at at the elementary, we're looking at a math adoption, we're also involved in that process at the middle school. So they're doing a thorough pilot of programs, and we will have a recommendation to the board the first part of June. So at the high school, they're working on writing, and they're also working on one of the CTE classes, a science class. And then at middle school, what we'll be looking at this year are the exploratory world language classes. I'm in the process of updating the bias review. It was first written by Erin Jones at OSPI when she worked at OSPI. It's probably been about 10 years ago. We updated it a couple years ago, but I'm just realizing now, as we continue our racial equity work and some of the readings I did over the summer, that I think that the tool, the language on the tool just needs to be modernized, more current with the correct terminology and a little bit more pointed on anti racism. So I'm working on that. That means that I'll have to update the Bob Hennessy Equity Course on Bias Review as well. So we'll be working on that over the next month or so. And the funding sources that we'll be looking at for next year, if there are state or federal grants that apply to specific areas. So sometimes we tap into highly capable or learning assistance program or Title I, if the materials, if part of the adoption covers those programs, as well as general fund. So I believe that's it on instructional materials. Any quick questions on that?
Yeah, this is Toby. Thanks, Stephanie. The math instructional material at the elementary school is to support the existing curriculum? Or are we changing the curriculum also?
We will be changing to a new program at the beginning of next year. The two programs that we're looking at this year are math expressions and ready classroom math. Both are super highly rated on the Ed Reports. Both have Spanish supports and ELL supports built into the program. And both have online components with assessment as well as individualized instruction for enrichment and remediation.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Stephanie, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Could you talk a little bit about how are we able to sort of affirmatively, proactively integrate equity training in like history and things like that in the curriculum side? I'm familiar with, and I hear a lot about all the great work we're doing in the professional development side. Have we been able to sort of integrate equity thinking and practices into the material we teach our children? And if so, how?
Why you always ask me these big questions, Bob?
I'm a big educator.
I know you are. You know, it's complex work. Obviously, we we started our very intentional focus on racial equity in 2015, 2016, and didn't really kick it off until the 2016, 17 school year with the teachers. But having said that, all along, obviously, bias review has always been a super important part of any adoption that we do or any review of the teaching materials that we have. So we have done a lot of professional development. You're absolutely correct. That's that's a first start. One of the most important phases, obviously, is opening people's eyes. And that comes through professional development and a lot of reflection and working with your PLC teams, having guests come in, having people who have been new hires who come in from other district, you know, just with a new fresh set of eyes. So it's about having a better awareness about what the holes are and what we've been missing. We've made a really concerted effort in the last three years to proactively send out information while covering lots of different diversity topics in monthly calendars, in instructional materials, websites for teachers, for links, training on the Native American, the adopted curriculum in Washington State, since time immemorial. Essentially, so trying to bring materials in that helps support the work while also creating systems for reflection and growth and continue to focus on racial equity. I don't know if I fully answered that question.
I have a sports metaphor. So you know, the bias review is like playing defense. And what do we do to play offense here in terms of and maybe the material doesn't, I mean, because I just think of how much we have all learned, geez, in the last year.
Yeah. So for example, I don't, I can give you a couple examples. And I don't, again, I don't know if it'll fully address your question. But, you know, let's take the highly capable program. We had previously been using the COGAT, which is a cognitive abilities test. And it had four parts to the test. We switched that this year to the NAGLIERI. The NAGLIERI is also a cognitive ability test, but it's a nonverbal test. It takes away all prior knowledge about events, language acquisition, all of that, so that it is a much more equitable assessment for our students. Another example, when we updated the Washington State History Textbook, we made sure that it had native authors and or reviewers of the content so that we knew that the content had been reviewed by tribal experts and approved by tribal experts. A lot of the other reviews, whether it's testing materials or curriculum materials, will have commentary usually done by experts that are not related to the companies themselves, that will address the diversity and equity issues. So it's an ongoing process. There's not any one singular approach. But by using all these various tools and by widening the lens in which we're looking at the curriculum, we can be sure that at least the instructional materials are becoming, I would say, moving towards an anti racist structure. The teachers themselves, you know, several years ago, we moved to the Marzano instructional model for teaching. And it talks very heavily in there about addressing students who have typically been underserved and planning and preparing for the needs of all students. So really, that falls on the building leaders, working with their teachers very closely to make sure that they're actually implementing those instructional strategies that are laid out in that program. So I don't know if that helps further. And we're just, we're on an ongoing process of improvement.
Stephanie, that, Bob, that was a great question. And Stephanie, I think that was, I really appreciate the the thoughtfulness you put into it. I'm wondering to sort of follow along because it sort of feels like your approach to this is very holistic. So it's, you're sort of thinking of this of this racial equity, diversity issues in all different points of view. I'm wondering, just to sort of piggyback off of Bob's question is, and and not to get too way into the weeds because we've got other things to talk about, but I'm going into the weeds. I'll acknowledge. What about, what about like, you know, really to having teachers really look at the texts that they're using, I'm thinking like English, for example, and the books that they're reading, really looking at that, or even like switching up what histories we're teaching and really like taking a big, like sort of a bigger step like that, not just sort of like, are we making sure that the textbooks we're using, you know, are have a good, you know, are anti racist, but but, you know, since we can't, since we seem to be having a hard time getting people of color to come and teach here, can we at least be proactive in teaching, you know, cultural things that we may not as white people be doing the best job that we're doing? And that's a terrible way I'm asking this question. I hope you're smart enough to get one of them.
I think I know where you're going. So so one, for example, like in English, traditionally, like old school, we all heard about reading male, white male authors was the curriculum. Mark Twain, right. So I can tell you this, that just this year, when the high school was reviewing their reading sets, their reading novels, they've actually added two women of color, one at the sophomore year and one at the senior year. And I am drawing a complete blank at the moment on which those novels are. But that's one example where they have traded out old texts. I know, for example, that John Reese stopped teaching To Kill a Mockingbird when he was still teaching sophomore English. And I can't remember exactly what he replaced it with. But I think our our English teachers are constantly looking at ways to broaden the voice, voices that our students are reading and interacting with. The middle school probably three or four years ago, did significant work on this, creating different units of study and really diversified their authors. And it's an ongoing conversation. I know last year, they engaged in a in a pretty thoughtful discussion about who should they be reading? You know, maybe it's time to shelve Mark Twain and look at other authors and look at other books. So all I can assure you is that our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our parent educators, everyone is keeping an eye out for diversifying voices, uplifting different points of view, trying to start enacting anti racist practices, listening to student voice. But it's a process. And I'm sure we will always have some blind spots. And our goal is to lessen those blind spots and try to have a much more open and diverse curriculum.
Great. Thank you. And then can I just ask one quick question? I'm sorry, I'm taking up so much time. Second Step, you you review it annually?
Right? Yes.
And is it all good with Second Step? Things are okay? Or what's what's, I'm assuming?
Yeah. So it's interesting because I actually contacted them, I think it's been two years ago now, and got in touch with their curriculum developers, just about the work we were doing on racism, because I was saying that I felt like it needed to be called out a little bit more specifically, because part of the problem with the social emotional curriculums is sometimes they're a little generic, like they don't really call out what the actual behavior is.
What the actual issues are.
Yeah. And and so I got a really wonderful letter back. It happened to be, it turned out to be a parent of one of our graduates who had is working for the company now. And they actually are in the process of doing a major review. Second Step is still in use in the elementary. It's a it's a it's a strong program. It's just like all programs could be better. You know, I think in specifically calling out behaviors. And then the middle school actually shifted to using a new program this year. I can't think of it either. I'm sorry, I'm tired tonight. But they've shifted to a different different program this school year because they felt the Second Step wasn't quite right for middle school, wasn't quite the right at the right age level for their students. at the right age level for their students.
Greg, what were you, were you gonna say what it is? I can't hear you.
She said she, she can remember right now, but I'm sure she'll let us know by an email. I think you're frozen, Steph.
Oh, no, I think, I thought she, she asked Greg.
Yeah, no, I couldn't, couldn't hear Greg.
Can't either.
Do I have it? Jody, can you check that adoption cycle and see if I happen to have updated that with their new curriculum? Can you just see if I put it on there? I might not have. Because it's new this year. Yeah, I still have second step, never mind. I know I updated it somewhere, probably on the website. And I just cannot for the life of me remember what it is. Sorry.
I don't mean to take up more of your time. Sorry, sorry, everybody.
Okay, all right. So any other adoption cycle instructional materials? Okay, so moving on to English Language Development Program. I, this year, and hang on, on clicking, don't click these yet, Jody. I've provided two handouts. One is a summary. That's kind of the same summary that I give each year. And this year I thought you just might like to just see a historical trend. So I, I picked out some things that we could look at together. Just a couple of quick things. We are pursuing Title III funds again, that really will support professional development for our team and instructional materials. We have to do that in a consortium because we do not generate $10,000. If you don't generate $10,000, you have to team up with other districts. So ordering manages that for us. And we haven't heard yet what our final allocation will be on that. I just learned yesterday, today, it's all a blur. We're going to be moving away from the ALPA 21, which is the test that our students take in that consortium. We're joining a new consortium. So beginning next year, we'll be working with a different assessment. And then the funding for this program comes from the Transitional Bilingual Instructional Program, which is a state grant, the Title III grant, which is federal, and then general funding. And we continuously improve our, our program model. Okay, so let's take a look at the summary handout first. So this summary handout is based off, basically the end of September. Our current staffing level, we have point eight FTE assigned for K through eight. We have point one FTE for the high school plus an additional seventeen and a half hours of para support. I am looking at our numbers right now because this was based on our projected enrollment last year. And last year, you'll see if you read down there that we actually had ten students transfer out of our district, moved out of state or moved to other school districts last year, both prior to the COVID pandemic and after. So we made projections and that's where the staffing ended, based on that projection. Now that we're up and running this year so far, these are our numbers as of the 29th of September. But we've had some movement. Just learned late this afternoon that we have a family who came to us new this year from California, moving back to California. And so that'll drop our numbers by three. Also, interestingly, this year, because we are in a distance learning format right now, our state has had us conditionally enroll all of the students that normally would have been screened. So right now we have all of our new, newer students, which is thirteen, I think minus the, the three that are leaving now, that still need to be screened, but they're currently enrolled in the program. So it's a little bit hard to know whether they will, once we, once, if we do end up being in person and have the ability to screen them because we're not allowed to screen them remotely, then these numbers may drop a little bit. But anyway, what I'm hoping to do is add some para support time at the elementary to help Sarah Hammel with the, with the caseload. Okay, let's see. Let's go to the other handout, which is the historical. And thank you so much, Jody, for doing this. So I left this year kind of shaded in gray because, as I said, things are still kind of in motion. So just know that we'll make some adjustments as the year goes on. But this gives you some historical ideas about the program. In 2015, 16, you can see that our total was fifty-seven. The next year was sixty-four, and then it was in seventeen, eighteen, when we jumped up to ninety-two. So pretty significant increase for one school year. And then the number has held pretty much around the eighty to eighty-five mark. This year we were anticipating in the seventies. So we'll just see how that plays out over time. The numbers that are in bold represent the students that are considered current students in the program. So they haven't yet met proficiency standards. And the numbers that are not bolded, the plus numbers there represent students who are considered in transition status. What that means is that they met the proficiency standard for their English language development standards. But they go into like a two-year cycle where we just monitor their progress. And so they can receive tutoring services or if something doesn't seem to be going right, we can actually eventually look at screening them again to see if they need to re-enter the program. But they're kept on for an additional two years and our funding formula is based on both the current status students, the ones who have not yet met standards and students who are in a two-year transition. And, and so that's what our funding is based on. So then I gave you kind of a staffing summary, just so you could see how the staffing lines up over time. You'll see there's years where we've kind of infused staffing into the system. So particularly that year where we had the big jump, we infused a lot of staffing. This staffing really depends on the number of emerging students, which are, are usually our students who are brand new to our system, like have been in the system less than a year and have no prior schooling in the US. It's not always the case, but so if we have a higher load of emerging students, they have more significant needs. So they typically get more intervention. And then we have our progressing students. But that gives you an idea. So you can kind of see how the staffing has worked over time where we've shifted staffing. And as I said, the staffing this year is not totally set yet. We're, we're crunching the numbers now that we've had our September and October counts and looking at the total number of students enrolled. Heritage languages are highest in any given year that are enrolled in the program was fifteen, but you can see this year we have fourteen languages that we're serving. I provided percentages. If there was more than one student, I provided the percentages. If the language is listed without a percentage, it just means there's one student with that heritage language. So you can see that Spanish is our, our majority language. So most, the majority of our students in the program do have a heritage language of Spanish. And if it was at a high of eighty-two and a half percent, and this year it's right around seventy-four percent. And that's kind of been pretty typical for the last several years. There, you can see one year in that year that we had that huge increase in enrollment that it dropped down to sixty, sixty-five percent or so. So that gives you an idea on the languages that we're serving.
Stephanie, hi, sorry. Could you elaborate? I'm, I'm not sure I understand entirely the heritage language. Is that, that, that means it's native speaking parent? Could you elaborate on what that means? Is native speaking parents and the child as well?
Yes, so there's two ways that students screen in or can screen in, like they get flagged for screening. One is if the first language they learned was a language other than English. So that could be, you know, any of one of these on the list here. Or if this language is the primary language that the student speaks at home. And so, right, so these, these languages are languages that our students first learned or have significant exposure to or speak at home, which means that there's usually at least one parent, if not both parents, who also speak that language. Does that help?
Not necessarily. They may be bilingual. Correct? Is that, was that what you're saying? Also, the, the parent?
The parents could be bilingual or multilingual, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also I should just say that just because these languages are listed doesn't necessarily mean that's the preferred language to communicate home. So the parents have a an option to say which language is their preferred language for communication. So sometimes you'll see English or sometimes you'll see the heritage language that's identified for the student, if that makes sense. Okay. I'm, so then at the bottom, this is an important statistic for us to track. When I first came to the district office and even before I got there, there was a recognition that our English language learners were being over identified for special education services. And so at that time, there's a, a real concerted effort to try to do better, to not so quickly designate our English language learners for special education. And so we've kind of tracked this. We want to make sure that it's not out of alignment with our district average. And you can see we're still somewhat high. It's a, it's a little bit hard to compare it straight to the district average because if you notice, if you look at the numbers, the majority of our English language learners are served at the elementary school, which has the highest enrollment, the most, the most number of grades and the highest number of students in the program. So if you look at Chautauqua's special education percentage, it's around sixteen percent, whereas the district average is about thirteen percent, might even be twelve percent now. But it's really important for us to kind of track this and dive more deeply when this number seems to be getting out of alignment and ask the questions. And it may be perfectly reasonable to have this depending on the students' needs and students' qualifications in those programs, but it's something that we, we track very closely. So I'm much happier to see a number around seventeen percent or lower like those previous two years. And this year we bumped up back up towards twenty percent. Again, that can be a function of the number of students enrolled in the program at any given time, but it's just something that we want to, want to track and, and dive a little bit more deeply when we see those numbers. So I think that's it for the historical trends. Any other questions on those? And we'll just finish up with the last few slides or bullet points. Okay, so let's see what else I have on that slide there. Yeah, so they take the English Language Proficiency Assessment. They're required every year. This will switch to the WIDA next year, W I D A. And they have to pass four domains, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And it's a requirement for all of our students who are in the program. And so quickly, here's a snapshot of last year. Unfortunately, our results are incomplete because we, we out of the seventy-six students that should have been taking the test, six of them were not able to complete the test prior to us closing our, our schools last spring. So our numbers are incomplete. Having said that, we ended up with three that exited proficient status. That number's a little disappointing to me, but without having a complete set of data, I have to, I have to kind of just sit with that. Fifty-seven are progressing and ten are emerging. That seemed a little bit high, so I went back to look at that number and it turns out that out of the ten, nine have been in our school system less than eighteen months, basically a year and a half, including summer months. So that didn't make me as nervous to see that number stay as high as it did. And then the one who wasn't is still relatively young, but has been in our system for four years. Typically, I think the next slide covers this, Jody, if you want to move on. Or maybe not, I must have missed it. In, in our program, it's probably on that summary sheet. Our students, it's typically about four years that they're in program. But of course, there are many who do stay longer and then there are some who are, are shorter than the four years. But four years is roughly the average for our students in our program before they hit that transition status.
So Stephanie, when they, Jody, will you go back down to the or the slide that we were just looking at? When they, when they hit proficiency, is that, what's the, does that mean that they're, they're almost fluent speakers? Or does that mean they're fluent as their peers and they can read and they can write as well as their peers?
It means that they've met the English Language Proficiency Standards, the ELPS as they're called. So let's see. Jody, I'm, I'm sorry to have you flip around. Can you go, can you go back to the summary page? I'm just gonna pull up.
Stephanie, you know, we're always like, oh, and one more thing, Stephanie, and then one more thing.
And I, I'm not as sharp tonight. I'm really, I'm very tired. I'm sorry. And go to the bottom, go to the bottom of the page there, Jody. So I'm, I just want to make sure I'm saying this correctly. Generally, it takes three to five years to develop what they call oral proficiency. So part of the problem in our system and, and part of what is difficult to recognize is a lot of times our students who actually qualify for this program from outward appearances seem like they totally know English, right? It's conversational English and they know enough to, to get by, but what they're lacking is that academic or really deep understanding of the language or maybe writing or a different area. As, you know, if you've, if you've studied a second language, you, you know, the difference between being able to hold a conversation or read in that language when it's not your, your heritage language. So it actually takes four to seven years to develop what they call academic proficiency. So all, all it means when they're proficient is that they've met those English language proficiency standards, which puts them kind of on grade level. But they're not a perfect correlation to the English language arts standards. There's a lot of correlation in some areas, but it's not a perfect corollary. So if you're proficient on the ALPA, it doesn't necessarily indicate that you're going to be proficient on the ELA Smarter Balanced Assessment. Does that make sense? So part of the reason for having them stay for that two more years of monitoring is to make sure that they continue on that pathway of, of language acquisition and that academic language development. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. That's great. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, Jody, back to the show. Sorry. I just have to end with my favorite thing to do, which is to show, show our preschool students, right? So one of the things I'm really missing is every year for, ever since I first showed up at the district, I go read the preschool students a story that I wrote about our OMPs, our Orca's Mustangs and Pirates. And I guess they'll be formerly named Pirates possibly in the future. But when I do that, I go, I read to them and I give them a welcome to our school district card and they get their own official OMP shirt and always brings a smile to my face when I look out my window from above and see them running around their playground with, with their shirts on. So this year's a different year. I haven't quite figured out how I'm going to make this happen, but I figure I can film myself. We can deliver it or I have no idea. We'll figure it out. If we can keep having them come, we'll figure out a system for doing it. But it's super important for me to welcome our preschool students into our family to really highlight the importance that they bring to our community and kind of give them that sense of where they're heading. So the story always ends with them talking about them being Orca's first transitioning to Mustangs and then becoming pirates at the end. So it's, it's a, it's a highlight and it's always a fun thing to go spend time with our youngest students, our three and four-year-olds and, and five-year-olds in the preschool.
Stephanie, this is the best dollar we'll ever spend. Is that a fair statement, do you think?
Every dollar we spend is the best dollar spent. Every dollar we spend is the best dollar spent.
But this one, this is putting in a plug here for E cap and it's
Yes. Obviously, obviously preschool, yes, I you know, any opportunity we have for that early childhood development, that opportunity to participate with peers and start to experience the school setting is setting those students up for future success. So absolutely, our preschool programs, both E cap and our AMPM preschools are are really super important foundational programs for our district.
How are we going to do graduation this year?
I know, right? We missed it last year.
We missed it, I know.
So anyway, any other questions for me? I feel like I've taken up more than your, more than enough of your time. But thank you again for giving me the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Stephanie, thank you so much.
Oh, I do need to just give a shout out to our amazing staff. Obviously, our billing staff, teachers, paraeducators, but especially to the the people that work directly in the English language program. And that would be Sarah Hamel, Sarah Sullivan, Kevin McLaren, Andrew Gess, Greg Allison, and Rebecca Gerzil, and then just a shout out to Sherry Mitra, who is a huge help. There's plenty of paperwork and letters and notifications, and she just does an amazing job helping me get all of that together and sent out to our family. So thank you to those staff for all of their work on this program.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Okay. So let's see, where are we now? We're on the, we have been through the bilingual program, so we're at the school year update with Slave Machine.
Great, that's me. Thank you, everybody, again. So, Jody, we're going to kind of co-pilot this. I appreciate how you worked with Stephanie. Hopefully, we'll be as seamless as as you were earlier. I sent out an email earlier today to staff and to our our families with our current information regarding how we're making decisions about returning or not returning to school. And there's two distinct two distinguishing characteristics to make is the are the questions that we ask ourselves is the first question is if we return? And the second question is how we return? And so hopefully, families and staff heard today that we are we're focused on making decisions based upon the data. And the data comes from King County, and it is it is based on the number of cases over the last 14 days per 100,000 residents. And so mid-September, we saw numbers dropping below 75, which is considered in the moderate range. And we saw those those numbers at 51, I believe, at its lowest rate, and then for a couple of weeks at 53. And then just recently, that number was updated yesterday. It's updated every Wednesday, or they try to update it every Wednesday. It was updated to 72. And the the data, as Barbara Gale mentioned, is lagging data. And so according to many of the superintendents and that I was on a call with on Wednesday morning and some public health officials, that number could be rising in the next in the next week's kind of report. And so if the data goes above 75, then we're back into a high level of disease activity, which would then put us in a different posture in terms of how we're opening schools or not opening schools. Many districts in our area have already opened, and those districts that have are probably going to have to do some some quick responses to any changes in the in the health data. Our district has continuously taken a kind of a slow, careful, cautious approach. And, you know, right now, we've we've set a date of November 9th. But if this data changes next week and we are back into a high a high level of disease activity, we're going to adjust our timelines. And so the what we've done intentionally and worked with our 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 labor leaders is to provide a buffer, a four-week period of time where we can not only plan the kind of the endless type of contingencies that we need to be able to to be able to and kind of the endless questions that Barbara posed, which we've been answering all along. But we also want a period of time to to see the stability in the disease activity. I have spoken with Rick Wallace from Bashon Be Prepared and the and 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 he's called it, there's no pandemic perfect. And but we're going to make decisions based upon the data from King County and and the decision-making tree with a high level of of consideration for student, staff, and our community safety. And so I want, I just want to preface this presentation with that information. I hope our community received that today in advance of the board meeting and 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 I would invite them to if 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 any of our community have concerns or considerations that we that we should be aware of, that they at a minimum, let their principals know, but also let me know as well. And so I'd like to just to we, in the last three weeks since mid-September, as as the disease activity went into the moderate level and which signaled that districts could begin planning for in-person learning for elementary students. We 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 began the the planning process, and the first step of that planning process was to send out surveys regarding particular schedules for for hybrid learning. And we wanted to get feedback from our staff, feedback from our parents, and with our older grades as much as as possible, feedback from our students as well. So this presentation will share with you the the data from the from the surveys and the decisions made from the data from the surveys and then some some frequently asked questions as well. So we'll move through these slides. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. We have Rebecca and Greg and Danny with us this evening to answer the questions and answer any questions or be available for questions after the presentation. Go ahead.
Before you jump into this, I just want to reiterate that regardless, there will still be an option for remote learning, whether we go to a hybrid learning model or not. If parents want to keep their children home and participate in a remote learning, that option remains on the table throughout. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. And so that 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 is something that we learned. We've continually asked parents about that. In the last survey, we, well, I believe we had asked in one in one survey, but didn't ask across all the surveys whether they would prefer to remain in distance learning. And so distance learning will continue to be an option for for all families. We want to accommodate them. We know families have different health needs, have different members of their family with different health needs. And so it is important to note that this is not a 100%. Everybody has to commit to a hybrid learning schedule. We and and the youngest students who you'll see are intended in terms of the decision-making tree, they're intended to bring back our youngest students first. Ms. Gerzil has submit another survey, another information request that will go out to families, I believe sometime next week, that will ask them if they want to continue with distance learning or participate in the in-person learning. That information is extremely important in our in our desire to be able to staff what which particular programs, and we have certain staff that may not be able to return because they may be in a high-risk category. And we will have to staff programs accordingly to both the number of students who will come back and the number of students who will be who continue in distance learning. So, Jody, let's go ahead and scroll down.
You say that the the state or different departments have provided us guidance on when we could begin returning some students into the school. But has the state ever provided guidance at what point you must return to school? Or is that? That's a question I haven't heard any answer to.
Okay, yeah, that's a great question.
So in other words, we were also providing the continuing opportunity for families to choose online learning. But at some point, does the state can say, all right, it's all done, and everyone go back to school?
That's going to be a probably unanswered question. The state thus far has put most of those decisions to local control. And so you know, districts right now are 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 very similar to how we're doing in providing multiple solutions for different families and their different needs. At what point in time would it become, you know, where distance learning would not become an option? That's pretty far out there, and I'm not sure whether whether I and I doubt that that kind of guidance or rulemaking would come.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to promote any particular method at all. I was wondering if that was a conversation that has come up.
No, it's a good thought experiment, but um, but right now, it's kind of probably probably enough in the distance where we haven't kind of put ourselves in.
Right. Sorry to start you sidetracked the conversation.
No, no, that's that's fine. So, Jody, you can skip to the next one. Okay, so I'm going to be presenting these slides in the terms of the survey results, a quick survey analysis, and then you'll see the decision that that came from from those results and some of the process that was involved in that decision. And so McMurray Family Survey, we had 114 responses. Parents and family families were basically asked to give their feedback their first choice, second choice, third choice on three different models. The AB two-day rotation, which is students here two full days, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. It could be Wednesday could be the off day instead of Friday. But essentially, a two-day, two-full-day model with students in AB cohorts, the school split in half. And AMPM, where those cohorts are split between attending in the AM and the PM. Once again, kind of split in half, and then an AB week where students have the half the school would attend one week and half the school would attend the second week. And so in this particular survey with 114 responses, the the kind of the 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 clear majority of folks who wanted their first choice was was a AB two-day model. And their last choice was the AB week. I mean, the AMPM week, and then the AB week was kind of their their second, you know, overall second choice. Move the next slide, Jody. And you can see the the high school, they offered this survey to students as well. So 100 total, 138 family responses, 94 student responses. And a very similar response in terms of the AB two-day rotation being the most favorable selection from our from our high school families and our high school students. Jody? And please, at any point in time, again, you can ask questions. We have our principals online. And so many comments, most comments coming from families, very few comments coming from students. But secondary families shared concerns that a half-day schedule would be disruptive. Commuter families overwhelmingly, if you saw a comment about the AMPM or half-day schedule not working, the commuter families absolutely gave a clear referendum on that on that schedule. That would not work for them. Also, a clear, probably not surprisingly, families wanted to see their students' siblings on the same daily schedule. And and then some families, again, really showing an interest in continuing with distance learning or 100% remote scheduling, given their health concerns, but also with that idea that if my my students might come back two days a week, but then the other three days. You know, the basically the trade-off of having five days of live instructions versus that model. Some families are kind of questioning because they're seeing success with with their with the current distance learning model. And then some students report, and then very few, again, I think I had four students make a comment. But a couple of them reported that basically any in-person would be better than online right now. Go ahead, Jody. Now we get to the staff results. Very similar staff results, 70% 70 responses from McMurray Bashon High School staff with, again, more of a consensus around the AB two-day rotation. The AMP week, we feel getting the least favorable response in the AB week and getting that's kind of second-tier response. And then some of the staff comments, you know, really around the health and safety of staff. That was the most significant theme represented in staff comments. Indicating wanting to know more about appropriate PPE supplies, protective personal equipment supplies, appropriate ventilation, safety training, and all critical to bringing students back in person. Really wanting assurances in that we have that administration in the district has a plan for for students wearing masks and appropriately social distancing. You know, for 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 our youngest students, for all students. And then staff in both schools are concerned about having to plan for for in-person learning and then the distance learning at the same time. You know, deep, the the workload on on staff right now is so significant that any additional planning can really kind of bend our staff to the point where they feel like they're about to break. And we were very sensitive about that. And this and comments in the surveys really kind of validated our thinking around that and that we have to be very careful about how we're planning for not only the the in-person learning, but you know, what what time and support are we providing staff to provide for that asynchronous learning? If you think about if students are back for two days each, staff are teaching for four days with the intent of having that fifth day as as planning for all the asynchronous work that students will be participating in when they're not in person. But there were some comments leading or telling us that there are some structures currently in place with our professional learning community leads and our administration to support their work. And that that's been ongoing, and that's kind of attributed to the ongoing collaborative conversations between our building leaders and our labor leaders and our PLC leads in the in the buildings. And so from that data, it was a fairly you know, fairly easy to draw a line between the staff and the family surveys to determine that the AB two-day rotation was going to be the 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 schedule that we're going to to be engaged in. I want to comment that, and Danny Rock has has said this many times in conversations with staff and families that given that the disease activity and when you're in the moderate range, you're bringing back your elementary students first, there really is a long lead time before we would even consider bringing back our secondary students. Even if we were to stay in the current level or just moderate level of activity, it's extremely unlikely that we'd be bringing back secondary students anytime before the second semester. And I say that with disappointment in my voice, but also kind of a realistic and pragmatic view of the future. We also want to recognize that in January, we want to make a very strong evaluation of the quarter system and our current kind of a current system of learning. And so again, it would be just unlikely that we would be coming back, our secondary students would be coming back before that before the semester. That being said, it's important that we still have that will participate in this process and and get some indicators from our families and our staff about what would be the preferred schedule. And so that being said, there's still lots of details to be worked out. Would it be Friday? Would it be Wednesday? And we anticipate that if we were in January doing this kind of review work about schedules, that we would also be reviewing the elementary schedule as well in, you know, kind of in conjunction with with the secondary schedule. So quite a few details. I'm not going to read the slide to everyone. You know, but there's just a lot of a lot of details to work out, but we have a lot of lead time to to make these decisions. I appreciate the PLC leads and our labor leaders at every building level. They've been working overtime, attending meeting after meeting to work. They've been working overtime, attending meeting after meeting to work through these details. And so it's that kind of collaboration and working together that's gonna, you know, really get us to the the place where we where we want to be. If the disease activity, if those if the numbers from King County and the decision making tree point us in the direction of bringing, you know, secondary students back. Any questions about the secondary schedule or or A B two-day rotation from the board right now and while we have kind of Greg and Danny on the line? And then I'll just offer it to Danny and Greg. If there's any additional comments you want to add about the process. I know, you know, you brought back both the McMurray staff and the V H S staff together in a in a in a decision-making team and not separately. And I didn't mention that, but is are there any other details or process that you want to highlight for the board?
No, I don't think so at this time. I think I think you summarized it well and and you have some lead time and lots of kind of, I think some piloting that our teachers are beginning to work on and thinking about, you know, what technology and what their classroom structure would look like to be able to support both in-person and remote learners. And so we're beginning that process as well.
Yeah, I actually I have a question that didn't come up during our other meeting, but but, you know, I'm sure as many people on this call, you listen to the news and you can hear about how their districts are handling this and you know, the hurdles that are coming up. And one of them is, it sounds like there's there's like a team of teachers that stay or that that work with the the on the kids who are coming into school. And then there's another team of teachers that are just working with the stay-at-home online, you know, so it's like these two groups. And I was listening to something on the radio about how they were talking about, yeah, you need to like hire all these, you know, so I that hadn't come up when I when we were talking about this. And so I'm wondering is that just I'm asking it sort of open-ended, just sort of to sort of address if there are people out who are listening, if if that if they also are wondering that. So I'm really all about clear questions tonight. So it makes sense.
Were you about to talk Rebecca?
Well, I think it's a it's a really different situation, I think, in middle and high school. So maybe you want to address it from the middle high school first. Or
Sure, sure. So the remote, I mean, what you're really talking about is how do we serve students remotely when we're offering in-person learning? And and vice versa. And so, you know, the and that and that comes down to how, what solution do we arrive at for our asynchronous learning? So in other words, it was clear that our community staff and students and parents want to be in a you know, some days at school and some days not at school over the other possibilities. But we have not clarified what will learning look like when you're not at school. For instance, we have not said that it will be a bunch of assigned work by the teacher that that you work on independently. We have not said that it will be recorded lessons from teachers that you're watching. We have not said that we're going to stream you from your home into the teacher's classroom. Those are all, you know, possible solutions and there's others besides those three, but we we definitely need to engage our staff more in what that solution looks like before we make any kind of declarations about what that asynchronous learning will will be. And for students or staff who who cannot or will not come into the school building for in-person learning when that happens. We will need to build out solutions for those folks. And at the secondary level, there's there is, we have the advantage of students who can access material a little more independently. And who can navigate some content on their own, independent of a of a teacher leading them through it, but there's a lot of limitations there, I'd say. So it will be, I think, an important question for us to look at. Greg?
Yeah, I think that's that's accurate. And and the more, and I don't think it's going to be a one-size-fits-all for any classroom or any teacher. And so we're really, that that came up in our P L C leads meetings is for flexible options for teachers, given given their own disciplines and teaching methodologies. And so we're gonna we're gonna look to create as much flexibility as possible for folks.
That being said, we don't have, I mean, I don't think we have any kind of budget capacity to be hiring additional teachers at the secondary level. That's not there. So
Yeah.
Any of the planning, any of the solutions that we come up with will not include requiring us hire additional staff in order to make that happen. It will have to happen with our current staff.
So do you want me to talk about the elementary or wait till after you present that info?
I I think it's a good question, but let's let's no, I I think it's a good question, no. Any other questions for secondary or Danny and and Greg right now? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Happy Principals Month.
Right. Please pass that along to John and Gus, too. I know they're not here this evening. Or maybe maybe they are. I thought I saw John. Maybe is John here? Maybe not. Maybe not anymore. All right. Moving on to Chautauqua. Okay, and so family results, we had exceptional response rates for Chautauqua. When we surveyed them, we had two hundred and forty-five responses and those parents and families had a chance to respond, again, three different models. And the first one, two full days in person with three days of distance learning. So similar to the the two-day model at the high school. Option two was for half-days in person. And then, you know, on Friday, they would, that would be divided between A M and P M. And then Friday, they would have a live lesson in the morning with with their teacher. And then option three is afternoons in person, but continuing with the distance learning that they're already engaged in in the morning. And these half-day lessons and the half-day morning would be focused on core instruction, English language arts and mathematics. And so option three is, once again, kind of continuing with distance learning and students will come back two half-days in the afternoon. So you can kind of see from this, from these graphs right here that families preferred option one with two full days of in-person learning and three distance learning. Their least preferable was to continue with the continued model of distance learning in the A M with two afternoons. And you can see a fairly pretty strong response in terms of of half-days in terms of their second preference. And some of that being their first preference. And so you know, let's move on to the next slide, please, Jody. Rebecca did a great job of reading through all the comments and doing summaries of those comments. Rebecca, please let me know if I don't summarize as well as you did. Twenty-two families, you know, really mentioned childcare being a concern and the full-day hybrid with fewer transitions working out for them. And, you know, someone mentioned, again, that continuity between six between six twelve and wanting that their siblings on the same schedule. Sixteen commented wanted to stay in this distance learning. Not probably surprising to to us. Sixteen mentioned anything in person is so important. My child is not engaging. And this speaks to you Rebecca mentioned in our opening team and with her staff and myself as well that the data that they're seeing is 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 in line similarly with the data that they saw in the spring with students who have Aces. E L L students struggling, struggling students are really finding it difficult to engage. And I think this you know, these comments kind of reflect upon that need of of any, you know, this, anything in person is going to be very important to them. Thirteen reached out to just to say thanks to the school. And that's a testimony to our staff, to our classified, everybody kind of just pulling in the same direction. But that's always nice to see. Nine mentioned that their students aren't thriving with live learning. They want fewer meets. And then eight mentioned liking the half-days because they want a consistent in-person teaching, the daily contact and then shorter days for for less time in mask. And for those of you in our community or in our on this meet, if you've worn a mask all day, that's that's a trying experience. And so I appreciate these parents kind of considering what does it mean to be for my child to be in a mask all day? And then lastly, commuter sharing concerns about travel time for the half-days and inconsistency of grade six through twelve. And worried about option three. And what that means is that if they are in distance, you know, in in distance learning in the morning, they're actually going to, in order to get here in the afternoon, they're going to travel during their distance learning to get here in the afternoon. And that would be that would be a disruption to that to that schedule. Rebecca, thumbs up? No? Yes? Okay, thanks. Okay, Jody. Now moving on to staff results. And so we had fifty-one staff respond. And and just to note, too, we sent out two surveys for Chautauqua. We had an earlier survey, probably about three weeks ago, and in staff, along with kind of just emerging information. We we had some new information and new a new schedule to consider. So we sent out the second survey in this. And this this survey is reflecting the second survey results, but I want our community to know that we had very similar, if not stronger, responses during the second survey. So the second survey was probably more informative in terms of offering pros and cons for each of these schedules. And so when we scheduled the, when we surveyed the Chautauqua staff, you can see a clear difference between how families responded and how our staff responded. Staff responded with option three being their preferred model and option one being their least preferable model and then option two being their second preferred model. So there's strong consensus amongst the staff around wanting to continue with in-person distance learning in the morning. And per and bringing students back two days, two afternoons in the week. Staff feels strongly about the the instructional advantage that that they're seeing and the distance learning and the success of their distance learning model with students. Go ahead and move to the comments. If you could just scroll down, Jody. And so significantly, the 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 comments centered around staff safety or around returning and wanting to delay the return as as much as possible and possibly returning after flu season. And Rebecca did some research, kind of October through March or in or in January. But there is some, you know, kind of questions about what flu season is, but definitely concern of what we're hearing in media and what we're hearing in the news and in our community around the the flu season, what we saw in public comment this evening. Staff are also concerned about the quality instruction, as I was indicating before. And the concern around a two-day model and leaving three days of asynchronous learning really had staff questioning the kind of instructional integrity of of a two-day model with three days being asynchronous and knowing what happened in the spring with you kind of engagement and how, you know, students were watching videos. And as I was talking with the staff, I had fortunately, Rebecca and I had the opportunity along with John to spend about an hour, hour and twenty minutes with the hybrid planning team at Chautauqua and really be getting kind of an in-depth understanding of the concerns, but also kind of reminding me when I used to be a fourth-grade teacher and what it was like to plan substitute plans. And anytime you're away, teachers will tell you that being away is not easy. In fact, it's actually much more difficult than actually being in person. And likening this asynchronous learning to actually what it must be like to, you know, like it's almost like preparing three substitute plans per week while you're also planning your two synchronous days, your in-person days. And so that didn't not seem, didn't seem to be sustainable. Several staff mentioned concerned about continuity for their students who are receiving supports in our M T S S, our multi-tiered systems of support two, three, and what that is, is reading and math supports, pull-out supports or in-person, you know, kind of push-in supports. But, you know, kind of conversely, I appreciate the daily core instruction for the half-day A B A B hybrid. And suggestions kind of included, maybe we phase in the distance learning with some half-day in the afternoon and then eventually move to the half-day A B. But then the conversations turned to, wow, that's a lot of transitions for parents. And Trent, parents like consistency. They like to be able to plan around schedules and that could prove difficult. And lastly, you know, staff mentioned concerns and I shared those concerns about continuing distance learning for those students who are not engaged or completing assignments. And you know, I remember Esther Morrison speaking with John Hodgson and asking him, like, what are you thinking, John? John essentially said, you know, I'm I'm in this, I'm in this profession because I want to be with kids and and see kids in school. And I worry about our students who aren't engaged right now. John and Rebecca have been in classrooms where they continuously see two, three, four, five students sometimes who aren't there. And those students are our students who are are most vulnerable right now. And that raised, you know, that raises a significant concern for for all of us. So, Jody. When considering all these concerns, because you have kind of the juxtaposition of parents wanting a two-day model and then you have staff wanting a let's stay in distance learning model. It really boiled down to, for me, what was going to be best for our for our students. And listening to John and me, myself, over the last two, three, four weeks, knowing the amount of research and commitment that our nursing services, that are administrative, all of our classified staff, Jillian at the at the elementary building are putting into the safety procedures from L and I and Department of Health. I just, you know, I I made the decision because there was not a a clear consensus that we saw at the secondary. I made a decision that we're that we're going to be, you know, if we if if we're able to move to hybrid, which is certainly questionable right now. And this, we're gonna, we're gonna listen to the science on that, but if we move to hybrid, we're gonna move to a four-day half-day model, which brings students, you know, every day a half-day A M or P M with a with a live lesson on Friday. We know that this model will first is a compromise between the other two models and the two groups who probably have the most, you know, kind of influence on myself in terms of the decision-making. But it's really about seeing our students every day. And and the intangibles that it's not so much about the reading instruction or the math instruction. It's about being with your peers, the socialization, the social emotional learning. The feeling like there's a sense of belonging in our in our district again. And so and and then meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students. And so that's the hybrid model that that I've chosen to move forward with for those specific reasons. And you know, we we made that decision in consideration of all the variables, of all the input. Even though in in as quick as honestly, three days, now that decision has we considered this November ninth timeline around that. And now there is certainly the contemplation that that could not happen. So for quite some time. So but it's important that that our staff and our nursing services plan in the, you know, in in case we are able to move in that direction. And so I'm I'm super appreciative of of all of our families who participated in the the surveys. The the careful consideration of the models by our staff. And then the thoughtful, you know, kind of analysis of the data with our with our staff and our hybrid learning teams at at all three buildings. And then last but not least, you know, kind of our administration who has really paid close attention to every single comment in the survey. And the implications of what those comments may mean to the, you know, the the day-to-day experiences of our of our staff and our students. So this would be a good kind of place to pause and and allow kind of our board and Rebecca's prepared to answer questions about the process. And any other questions you have for the for us?
This Toby, I have a question that seems that for commuting families, the half-day Seems that for commuting families, the half day schedule was was pretty inconvenient. And many commuting families have kids in elementary school and. Either in McMurray and high school. Maybe you don't have an answer yet, but are there plans that we can be creative where we can address the needs for those families?
Yeah, I sent them a a separate email this afternoon just to kind of clarify what plans we have in place. And so. We are kind of communicating directly with them. There's a couple. Things that aren't established yet where I'm in communication with Camp South and Bashan Kids who are both childcare programs on the island that are interested in continuing. With providing childcare under this model. They're not quite sure if they would provide. An afternoon or a morning program and we would place kids accordingly so they could attend those childcare options. And so one of the things we'll be looking into is could we could we offer that to our commuter students that they could attend? Like come in the morning and stay for afternoon at Bashan Kids and then go to the ferry. But I know that's complicated with the ferry monitor and such. The other thing I sent to commuter families and you know, they haven't only one had responded that was positive about it, but that doesn't. It's not a majority. So but they are looking at ferries and they would come on an eight thirty ferry and if they came for the morning class and then. They go back on the twelve forty and so end up home around one. So I mean, also for some of our families, they'd be like, that sounds great, like more childcare than. You're getting on island. So I think for some of our commuter families, they're just like, that sounds wonderful, four days a week. But. For some families, you know, if you're once the high school and middle school come back, if you're getting multiple kids from a ferry, like it definitely. Has some challenges. And so I think being able to utilize on island childcare. And they were really excited that we're going to be able to still transport and, you know, figure all that out. I think we can accommodate. We also have about thirty commuters at the elementary level. So we're not. We're not dealing nearly with the the situation at the middle and high school with disappearing numbers. And so it allows a little more flexibility.
It seems like you're pursuing the right, the right ideas.
Yeah.
Thirty? I'm sorry, thirty?
Around thirty, yeah. Some as little as kindergarten, some older. So they need a different amount of care. We'll probably be hiring for a ferry monitor. If anyone out there listening would like to do that job, keep that in mind.
Careful what you ask for.
Exactly. And then I wanted to address actually is the Beth's question because I think a lot of parent, our parents have that same question. About like, how is this distance learning working at elementary? Because at the elementary level, our teachers are pretty clear, like. Streaming an elementary classroom is just not good for anyone. I know it's happening in some places across the country, but it's just, it's we really, our teachers really want to focus on the kids that are in the classroom when they're there and they want to be able to take them outside. And so. When we looked at the half day model, we looked at, you know, what's best for kids and that. So the kids at home really. The what we're hearing from some parents is that they really want to continue. The kids can't come to school, but they really want to continue with some live lessons. And so. We do have, what we have, we have some teachers that are specialist teachers that have like. Our and library and music and Spanish and and they have taught in the classroom in the past. So they're certified classroom teachers. And so what we're kind of what most schools are doing, what we're doing is kind of matching. Okay, these teachers can't come back and then these teachers. Can take their place in the classroom. And then we can, our classroom teachers can integrate the arts into their classroom and we just won't have specialists for the arts during that. Time of distance learning of hybrid learning. And so we could hopefully there's this like beautiful match. Of people that can't come in and people that can go in the classroom. And then it's it's a cost neutral. But we are finding, you know, we have a couple of teachers out on maternity leave. And so we do, we we may have too many people out that we we do in fact need to do some hire. And so we're we're kind of look at that. We're going to find, figure out, the hiring would be to cover the in person classrooms, not for distance learners. We think we will, we will be able to match. The distance learners and still provide live lessons. And then the also the work in CSOW. That we've been providing the and the asynchronous, the independent work. So we think that that will actually be, will be pretty able to accommodate it. And we, the way that we're doing it. We're also going to be able to accommodate if a child decides to come back into their classroom. I know some districts are just like shuffling all their kids and you get and just you come back, you never know what you come back to. And it's like, no, it's just splitting classes in half. And so if if a parent decides to stay at home. And then actually by January, they're like, actually, I'm ready to go to school, like the class will be there and the teacher will be there. So they can, they can come back. Unless they have one of the few teachers that can't teach in person. And so for most kids, they'll have their same teacher and. And it'll be, we'll have the flexibility to accommodate people's needs.
Great, thank you. I mean, it is. So incredibly complicated. I mean, because and I think I looked down and I see Brandon down there and I think, wow. Bussing. Wow, that's.
Yeah. So on the survey that we have going out next week, we're asking like, do you want to be in person? Do you want to be distant? Do you plan on bringing your kid? Do you need a bus? Are you looking at childcare? I mean, those are the three factors that we kind of need to know in order to place students. But Gillian and I were just talking about this today. It's kind of like we're planning for a new school year. Like we do in August, you know, but the school year has never happened before. So it's a new school year under completely different circumstances. And you're doing it while school is going. And so it's like the the challenge is is big. If you like problem solving, it's like lots of opportunity.
Rebecca, would you also, you did such a great job in the in the in the in the in the group that we were meeting last week. Or this week, whenever it was, we were talking about this and someone brought up a question about equity. And how does this model really serve? How is it really serving our kids? The best way. And you have such a great answer. I don't know to put you on the spot, but if you can remember how you said it, because it was, again, I think it's a good for people to. To hear that what you are actually all thinking about, that you actually are thinking about everything or as much as you can.
So we do think this is the best model for equity. And so we we want to meet the needs of all kids. And there are kids that really need, they need to be in school and the and the way that we make sure that they have food, that they are protected. That their access to learning is by bringing them to school. And so by having kids in person four days a week, you're going to reach those kids that. Don't have the supports at home that that help them, you know, access their learning. The students that need more experience with the English language, the students that have special education needs that really. Highly benefit from an in person model. It's like all those students will have much greater access to their education by coming in every day. We will also look at like, are there some students in special education that could stay longer? So that they could be maybe the half day with their classroom teacher and then get special services afterwards. And so. This will enable us to just provide much more access to our students because the thought of even if it's not that many students. The thought of some students not really accessing education from March until like the next January is or the next March. From an educator who like we've dedicated our profession to, you know, closing this achievement gap and opportunity app to just see this gap widen. I think we need to see to take this opportunity to try to close that gap instead of. Continuing. And we're, I think we're providing a great distance learning option and the live lessons, almost all families really appreciate it. And the the ones that don't are able to not do live lessons and just do the 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 assignments. And so we're pretty flexible, you know, we're doing the best we can, but there's kids we're missing. And that is what really stressed us out is like missing, we just, we really want to be able to reach every student and we just need them, we need them in school.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks Rebecca. Any other questions for Rebecca about Chautauqua, the hybrid learning schedule? Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you. Thanks Rebecca. Great job.
Yeah, so I'll move through these kind of last frequently asked questions fairly fairly quick. I know you've had a chance to re review these in the in the board packet, but. We really have been intentional about a a slow cautious phased in approach. And you can kind of, you can see right now the 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 schedule of students that we would be bringing back if the. The the King County data, you know, indicates that we will continue in a moderate level. According to the decision making tree. So kindergarten grades one through three, if you're wondering why grades one through three, it's because we have multi age. And so it's not as easy as bringing back kind of grade by grade by grade. And then grades four through five. And then again, as the disease activity allows, grade six through eight and then nine through twelve. Because of the, you know, schedules right now, again, in all likelihood, I, we don't, we don't anticipate secondary students coming back. Until the semester. There we 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 will be reevaluating at that time, but at at least at this point in time, we do want. The students who are on a similar A B schedule, the one two, the one, the two day A B schedule, that we do have the capability. To put siblings on the on the same schedule by working with office managers and understanding who's in Skyward in those families. There has been some questions and so I thought it's best to to put this out there if. You know, if we start to improve, will we expedite the schedule? And the answer is no. King County Public Health and Pierce County Health. Our public health Seattle King County and Pierce County. Patty Hayes and Sarah Regal and Anthony Chen, the leaders in those organizations. Do not reckon, you know, they recommend a longer period of time so that you can see stability in the in the rates. And so. We have no interest in in expediting. But also, we we need the time to make sure that all the safety standards are met. And we have probably come, I think, a long way. With our safety handbook and all the contributions from our nursing staff and and Brandon from, you know, bussing and facilities from Kevin and. Gosh, so many other people, but. It it takes time to plan. It takes time to check, double check and triple check all of our plans. Answer all the questions that Barbara Gale asked in in our. In our opening comments. And so I don't anticipate any expediting of any schedules. We won't, we just won't. You know, there are very prescribed protocols for when if we have a confirmed case. And so. Department of Health and P S E S D have given us those protocols. We will follow those protocols to to the T. We have sample. Letter templates that we would be sending out to our to our community. And then we obviously have contact tracing protocols. And working closely with Department of Health. In terms of communication and and following through with close contacts and who would be, who who would then be asked to be quarantined. You know, Department of Health would be then directing us to close schools or not close schools or or isolate or quarantine cohorts or not quarantine cohorts. And so we really are are are, there are no, there there is no flexibility or independent decision making in this. It's it's fairly well prescribed and guided by the guidance that we've received so far. Jody. Some of the big questions that come up, you know, in our community and labor management is, you know, how do we enforce social distancing and. You know, we we do a great job right now with our positive behavior supports in in our buildings. Lots of education, lots of opportunities. You know, if I asked everybody to. To 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 un, you know, kind of put their screens on and and show hands, how many of us have. Exited our car to go into the, you know, the third way. And then had to go back to our car because we didn't have a mask on or just, you know, had to remember. That's kind of what we're expecting at the beginning of school. And what it does, it just takes reinforcement. It takes, you know, lots of teaching. We are also. We have right now a draft kind of pledge, a safety pledge that we would like. That will be asking our families and our students to per to sign and participate in. Board members included as you come onto our, if you come onto our campus. They agreeing to, you know, the the standards of safety that we know are are needed in order to. To, you know, keep in person learning possible. So it won't be a quick, easy process, but the. Also, all early signals from the students that we have in school right now in small groups indicate that. That we should see a high level of compliance early on. And then kind of that question of if you can't, if, you know, if 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 we get a confirmed case and we can't. You be in person, we would just pivot back to our distance learning. Thanks, Jody. Kevin Dickerson and Matt Sullivan and 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 Sarah, they have worked diligently. And now analyzing our HVAC systems. You know, and improving where we can improve. Finding alternative solutions. We continue to research and investigate. It's difficult for districts who have older buildings to invest the kind of, or, you know. Come up with a kind of significant capital investments that it might take to bring them up to speed to a two thousand, you know, kind of. Twenty one or two thousand twenty level of of air filtration. And it's not suggested that that every that every district do that, as a matter of fact. And so this is kind of where we have the the system. Of mitigation strategies that we have in our district. HVAC is just one of those systems. And I congratulate Kevin and his staff and and Matt to. On the work that they've done to improve our systems and find solutions and then continue to find solutions and be open to alternatives. To improving the the filtration in in our buildings. And then a kind of in same regards to classrooms cleaned and prepared for students, we have pretty. Explicit protocols and what those expectations are are going to be. For cleaning and sanitization of our of our classrooms. There are still questions, no doubt about it. As soon as you make a decision about an AMPM, you know, half day model for elementary students, all of a sudden that. That puts everybody back on the drawing board. Okay, so we're going to have an hour between these cohorts. Let's problem solve. What does that mean for our custodial staff? What does that mean for our teaching staff? What kind of break, you know, can they, you know, can they get? Was, what does it mean for if there's any food services being provided or not? So. Your classrooms cleaned and prepared. These are questions that once we settle on schedules, then we can, you know, kind of buckle down and start to plan out what that might look like. Jody. And will secondary students be on the quarter system? And so I I kind of signaled earlier on that in in January, we'll be doing a thorough examination of that of the quarter. Versus semester schedule. It'll, this examination will probably in coordination with the elementary school as well. If we are able to make any significant in person learning moves at the semester. I can just be pretty candid with the board that we are not able, we will be able to. Do an AMPM model at Chautauqua. And a two day model, you know, at, you know, at at the high school. Or at least right now, the the costs for bussing would be fairly prohibitive to to do that. So there's going to be some evaluation happening in January where we're going to be kind of back at the drawing board. And that just kind of speaks to the pandemic. Every week it feels like we're back at the drawing board, trying to trying to figure things out. But it doesn't mean that the information that we're getting right now is 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 worthwhile and we're going to continue learning. But the quarter system will be evaluated in January in terms of what our next steps are going to to be regardless. You know, there is the, you know, the students will have six classes per semester. And be earning, you know, those those credits similar to to years prior. We will be providing transportation. And then Jody, the the last questions. So in terms of schedules, you can, as you heard Rebecca right now is is busily working with her office staff. To get as much information as we can from families. We'll use that information and hope so we can get any. Schedule information out to families by the end of October for Chautauqua. We know that secondary students. You know, and families would want some information in terms of whether whether they'll be on A or B. It's just too early to say that right now. It really is. There's so much planning to be involved, but also. As I indicated, the disease activities have to fall pretty low and for a significant amount of time for us to consider secondary and. And at this time, it's it's just unlikely that we're going to see secondary students before the semester ends. and at this time, it's, it's just unlikely that we're going to see secondary students before the semester ends. And so kind of last, last question is about this kind of I, idea of this unique identity and, and the culture and traditions that we have in our district. And I think over and over again, we've seen teachers come through in amazing ways, administration and our, and our staff come through in amazing ways. And if you participated in our, our graduation ceremonies last year, you saw kind of firsthand ways in which we kind of transform and innovate to provide students with hopefully the memories and traditions that kind of former generations have, have walked away with. So that's not going to change. It's, it is more difficult, you know, for sure. But as, as, as change comes, so do, you know, the, I think the Vashon spirit endures. That's kind of what I have to say. The, it's, it's unique. It's its own live and breathing thing. And I'm excited to see what kind of what, what comes of this. But I, for me, I feel like there's a sense of optimism that rests in, in this, in this question. And this idea that creativity bounds. Even just seeing this, you know, the Vashon Nature Center now with over 800 participants and everyone counts. These are the kinds of moments that we might look back on and go, wow, that's, that happened during the pandemic. And so, and it could only happen on Vashon. So that's kind of concludes the presentation for the board tonight on, on opening. But I, of course, I'm, I see our principles are still in the line and, and I welcome any questions from the board as well.
I think my only question is, is this going to be, is this slideshow going to be easily found on the website? So people who missed it tonight can see it?
Yes, and I sent it out to families.
Great, great.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Well, it's watch and wait and, and prepare. And it sounds like there's been a lot of work going into this and just want to thank everyone involved in that work again. Thank you so much.
So this is a couple more pieces of the, of the report tonight, enrollment. Jody, if you could pull up the enrollment summary there. If you remember, we were down approximately 14 students at, for our September count. And over the course, we learned that over the course of September, we were able to capture any enrollment during that month, not just in the first four days. We did capture between six and eight students. I can't remember completely where that number finally landed. But our October count were down a little over, not a little, or 17.7 students, I believe, or 17.35. There we go, 17.35. And so we have had students exit the district and for various reasons. And we are still, you know, sending them the exit survey. But Rebecca has indicated that four or five of those students at the, the elementary building left for schools that were offering some in-person learning. And just a, a kind of a note too, you know, the private schools in, in our, both our counties are still accountable to the, the Department of Health guidelines. And so you know, once they go to moderate range, they probably may have more flexibility and, and, and able to move quicker than, than larger districts. But if the levels do go to high, that any private school would have to restrict in-person learning to small groups similar to public schools. But right now, we're, we're, we were down 14, then we picked up six or eight, and then we're back down to 17. So.
Revenue impact, please?
Well, every, every student, every F T is about $10,000. So if you go from 14 to 17, that's around $30,000. Yeah. And just a quick comment, just to the board, you know, our Wednesday superintendent meetings, districts are seeing similar results in terms of, of students are mostly going to private schools where there are in-person learning. So it's, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen with enrollment.
Fascinating, a report this morning, NPR that highlighted this. One of the takeaways was a dramatic decrease in the number of kindergarteners enrolling.
Right.
And then, of course, the ongoing challenges that presents to them as lifelong learners. Yeah, it's serious. It's not, you know, it's everybody.
I appreciate that, Toby. Right? And, and just a few updates for our focus groups. The Community Engagement Group, which is again led by Joe Upington and Chris Peliquin, we have the results back from the distance learning survey. Get to my data here. We had a really strong return rate on the, on the survey. There we go. We had 364 families respond to the distance learning survey and six of our Spanish speaking families. And so really, you know, overall, you know, the, the, the team hasn't gotten together yet to analyze the results, but for myself kind of and a quick review of the, of the, of the results, I was surprised to see, because we, we asked questions about workload and the adjustment. And what was that like in terms of, you know, how was the adjustment? Very difficult, extremely difficult. How's the workload? Too heavy? And in each of those scenarios across most of the schools, we saw about 25% or between 25 and 30% of families respond that the adjustment was difficult or the workload is, is, is too much. And I don't know why, but that, that was pretty optimistic to me. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know what number I set for myself that would make sense. It felt to me that I was kind of aiming for, if anything, if, if we had, not that, not that 50% is a great number, but I just, from what I see and what I hear and, and families and, and some of the struggles, I was, I was just surprised to see that that we had a large number of families indicating that the adjustment wasn't, you know, difficult or, or the workload was, was manageable. You know, now it really, it comes down to us looking at some of these individual results and, and determining kind of what our next steps are. But the Community Engagement Team hasn't, will meet again next Tuesday to go over those results and come up with some recommendations for, for admin team and our, and our teacher leadership teams. They let the outdoor learning group, they met yesterday for the first time. I have no update from them. John and John Hodgson from the elementary building and Brandon Case, who's on tonight, are leading that group. They met for the first time yesterday, yesterday, I believe, and we'll be able to, I'll be able to provide you some updates at the, at the next board meeting. And then the Latino focus group met at the beginning of last week. It seems like a long time ago. It has been. There was some agreement that we, that we needed to better understand what, what services are being provided by, by whom. And so you know, as we're, as, as we're kind of by tutoring services or BYFS or, you know, Comunitad or, you know, St. John, Viani, they're just a, a, a clear opportunity to, to come together and understand who's providing what services. And for myself, the kind of the, the aim to better understand what the needs are. Because if, if districts like ours are going to, I mean, we, we, we've always been challenged by providing services, but if, 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 let's just say, you know, Zabet and, and members of Comunitad or the Latino community, if we're going to go in front of our legislators, if we're going to speak with, it's, you know, with Fitzgibbons or, 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 or John, you know, One or, or Eileen Cody, we're going to have to have some solid numbers and some solid understanding of what, where are the gaps? And if we're going to, you know, because right now we're, we, we're not funded. You know, a racial equity grant or these are sustainable monies. We need to, we need to think long-term about how we're providing services for families whose whole language is not English. And in order to do that, we need to know, we need to have some good data in terms of what is the need? And so this team is the team to, to get that information. And so I'm, I was appreciative of, of the collaboration and the, and the, you know, the, the conversations that we were having in that team. And so this actually does conclude this part of the report. If you don't, if you have other questions, it doesn't. And I'm more than welcome to answer them as well. I, I just didn't want to leave out those things out.
It's a lot to cover. Any questions, anyone? All right then, Slade. Thank you for running us through all of that material. Okay, now we're going to switch gears to the National Park District Bark Lease Amendment. I think Matt's going to present this.
Well, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. Last week, we received an email from Elaine Rochefeld, of course, is the executive director of the Vashon Park District, and they have been awarded another state grant for the installation of a concrete walking path with pods, which are additional skate features which are depicted in the attachment that Jody just pulled up. As with the previous grant application that built the initial pump track at Bark, which of course is the Burton Adventure Recreation Center, but also as we know it as a Burton Elementary School site, they, the park district must demonstrate that the life of the project, once completed, will be a minimum of 20 years. They anticipate that this project will be completed around and in 2024. So they're requesting an extension to the lease agreement out to December 31st of 2044. That is the size of it.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Matt on this?
Matt, what are the policy considerations the board should be thinking about in approving this?
Right. I think there was an email and I, I agree with you on that, Bob, in regard to the possible dissolution of the park district. I know there is some concern out there, whether it be taxation around the hospital or health district, along with increase of roads levy, et cetera, and library. Will we be kind of on the hook, if you will, for any monies? That if this does not, you know, run out the lease of 20 years, I think that's what you're asking, correct, Bob?
Was I too obtuse?
I, I don't think we will be throughout the original agreement. Item seven in that school property lease is dissolution of the park district. And of course, there's item 11, which is a indemnification, hold harmless of us, in particular, the school district. I, I, I don't see that as an issue for us. And what is the possibility of dissolution of the park district? I, I really can't speak to that at this point.
So, but I just, I'm, maybe I was too cute. I believe we would be on the hook for the amortized value of any remaining asset if the board were to, if, if we were to have to recover the property. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Yep, exactly.
Does everybody understand that?
I believe, we do.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a similar conversation.
Okay.
I want to say about two weeks ago when this first came up. And went through a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's, I remember it from that time period as well. So we have a pretty good grasp on it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, would the state come back and ask us for that money? That's one question. And or should we insert into this amendment language that would, you know, release us, if you will, hold harmless us from owing those, those monies?
That certainly is attractive if we can make that fly.
I'm looking for direction from you as the board. If this is something you'd like to pursue, I could speak with Elaine on that side and probably insert a couple of sentences that would do that for us.
Is it possible that the contract between the state and is it possible that's already in part of their contract? What would happen in the event of dissolution?
Yeah, Toby, that's an excellent question. I have not seen that contract between obviously the park district and the state. And that's what I could speak to Elaine about.
And what's the timeline on making this decision? Is that a reasonable request to review whether that's language we could add?
I think, I think it's, it's definitely reasonable and we have the time.
I think we, it sounds like there's two questions to ask then. Is, i- is it already covered in the park district contract? And if it is not, or if it is and it's not satisfactory, is there any room to negotiate? So yes, please, Matt, if you would have those conversations with Elaine, that would be great.
I will. And then, of course, on October 22nd, we'll come back with information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt on the, the Barclays Amendment?
I had, I think I had asked a question via email, but it's probably worth, you know, repeating them for the public's interest, which was, what's the, what's the out, right? You know, if down the road, we wanted to reclaim the property, what's our ability to do that? And I believe it's an annual renewal.
That was my point, Toby, that we would, we would owe them the value.
Yeah. But I mean, the, the idea is that the, the, the land is actually a valuable asset to the school district.
Correct.
And so we don't want to encumber it, you know, forever if for some reason we needed to, you know, tap into that resource.
So we, I mean, I, I was just hoping to make that clear. We are agreeing, I believe, Matt, correct if I'm wrong, that if we were to say for 10, in 10 years decided we wanted to reclaim it, we would owe the park district for 50% of the value of the asset or the state. Is that correct?
Correct. That's the recapture clause, if you will, in the contract.
So Matt, I'll, I'll, Slade, I, I, I have some interest in, in talking about this offline.
Like Toby, like you're saying, excuse me, didn't, I mean, the, all they're saying is, and this was my understanding of it, and I'm clearly probably was wrong, but they're just asking for a two-year extension. Right? Haven't we, haven't we basically in essence said yes to this already? And now they're just wanting a two-year extension?
Yeah, that's, that's the immediate issue. And it'll be surfacing is, is kind of already baked into it. But, you know, since there's an opportunity to have this conversation, it's something that we can see if it may, might need adjustment at this time or as well.
It's two years and the value and, and the financial cost of the improvements they make. Is, that, that's the risk we are assuming. And I, I, I'm agnostic on that. I just want us to all be clear that we are assuming that risk.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's worth asking the questions. I just feel like we've already, we've already said yes. It seems like.
Yeah, we presently assumed that risk. Now we're extending it.
And adding to it because the, the additional assets they're adding.
The financial cost of the improvement.
Yeah, yeah, the, the improvements would be the new piece that would make the dollar value obviously ascend. And thus the calculation higher. So Matt's going to look into that and we'll hear from him next time.
Thanks.
Right. And then we can, I can reach out individually to y'all as well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt. So now we're going to a board policy update.
We're going to kind of get back into our rhythm of, Jody and I, as, as you've seen in an email to y'all, we have quite a few policies to now kind of work through. It's been our typical rhythm of doing kind of three to five each meeting. We might bump that up a little bit to, to make it through because we, enclosure, we, we, we did kind of backlog a few. So before the board tonight is policy 3122, 4200 and 5231. And so 3122, again, most of these are kind of recommended amendments, revisions from, from WASTA. 3122 is related basically to COVID-related absences. And then kind of ensuring at the, at the end of this policy that we are And then kind of ensuring at the at the end of this policy that we are. That we have a kind of that we're using multi tiered systems of support to support. Students who are notably absent from school. Policy 4200. Is the, I'm sorry, Joey, I'm just blowing through the safe and orderly learning environment. Just kind of revisions in terms of words, wordsmithing, but we also have the addition at the end. Of the drug and alcohol language and the prohibitions of those on our campuses. And then policy 5231. The length of the workday and so WASDA had some language put forth that they wanted to revise. And and then we've also made additional revisions. Significant work was done with BEA in negotiations. Last year around the idea of salary professionals.
It's like a.
That's like a drop this time.
One. One thing is for looking at making these changes, and this is something we do from time to time, have a cadence of refreshing them, but. I would hate to see us make a bunch of changes to accommodate sort of the new learning. Environment with COVID and then, you know, sometime for now have to go back and undo all that. I assume that's not the the direction we're going through, and I did I read through these, but not with that. Not with that thinking until just now.
You know, Toby, I was thinking the same thing, and I was wondering if it's mostly the. Policies that are most affected by COVID.
Can we go back to this educator? I I was just reading this for the first first time. I'm sorry, the educators are salary professionals, et cetera. I guess it was on the previous page. I guess that's just a statement and you say, so what? What's the what's the one to conclude from that statement that that second paragraph under certificated staff? Is there a so? Well, why is that statement in there? I guess is what I would. You we need to finish it, it feels like.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not clear on whether these are specifically COVID related. I think they are not. I think they're.
Correct, but my my point remains. What what is Slade? What's the purpose of that statement?
He he dropped off.
Okay.
Yeah. He's having, I think he's having some technical issues. We're all familiar with this. He'll be back, I'm sure. He's probably running around trying to find a cord or something like that. Pick his kid off the internet. I don't know.
There he is. He's muted, though.
Is that? There's like three computers in the office and they keep taking the plugs out to plug in the adapters. And I thought. I've been plugged in the entire time.
It was a different computer?
Right, but 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 the other end wasn't plugged in.
That happened to me in the school board meeting, because when Zoom goes full screen, you can't see your battery indicator.
Right, right, exactly.
On battery and all of a sudden, it was done.
Yeah, so.
Welcome back.
Yeah, I'm watching mine walk down. So we were having a little chat about this while you were gone, so maybe Bob should re-ask your question.
I mean, this isn't a concern. I'm just wondering, so in the second graph, under certificated staff, educators with salary professionals, what what's the purpose of that? Is that intended to mitigate against the previous paragraph? Or I I just don't know what. It's a so what?
So I know it's I I I'm glad you asked, actually, and I I see leases online tonight. This is, I think, one of the most significant achievements. In the collaboration that we that we did together with Labor Management and. We 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 began to move away from this idea where you have to. Detail out every single responsibility of our certificated staff and recognize that. That there are salary professionals. And that. The work that gets done is is done. I think there was a commission. It 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 gets done. Not as, you know, on an hourly basis, but teachers are using weekends and the evenings to get the work done. And it's not about trying to outline all the parameters and.
No, I I get that. I just I okay, I guess the second paragraph is not intended to mitigate against the first paragraph.
Right.
The first paragraph is binding.
Right.
And the second paragraph does not. In any way under, you know, alter that.
No, no.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
So this is a, again, the first reading of the of these three policies. We we would have brought. Two of these policies to us during closure, but here we are kind of picking up where we left off, so. Any any questions?
So this is predate. Yeah, I just want to clarify, these predate anything to do with closure or COVID. These were just.
3122 is is just just came from WASDA and we put that at the top and then I'm picking up the other two because they're they're the leftovers.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, 3122 is definitely related to like, okay, so what's an absence in remote learning?
Gotcha, okay. With you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And for ready to move on, then we're going to look at the. Best CBA.
Yeah. Absolutely, so.
In our agenda.
I'll kind of again hit the hit the highlights here. I'm going to list the negotiating team. We had a great. Negotiations with the ESP, Rena Paul, Elizabeth Parish. Rena Paul, if you know, is the UNISER rep, Elizabeth Parish, Heather Baldwin, Colby Gaitman, Kathy Hall. From the ESP and then also thanks to Greg Allison and Lisa Sarah and Catherine Coleman. We started, gosh, back in April, on April 16th. And we met 11 times, 11 negotiating meetings online, so 11. I'm gonna say 11 times, two, three, four hour sessions. We ratified on the. The week of August 24th, it was ratified by the ESP on the 3rd of of September. And kind of the highlights in this in this negotiation in terms of contract language. We we did a lot of work around job descriptions and clarifying job classifications, a lot of work around layoff and seniority. We did a lot of work on professional development opportunities for our BESP staff. That was that was critical and that work continues to go forward. Catherine Coleman has been working extensively with the ESP leadership on really designing professional development. Comparable to classified staff and really meant to bring their voice in and what are the needs and and then trying to provide for those needs. In terms of compensation, there was a desire on both of our parties to. Bring all members of the ESP into the top three in in terms of our comparable districts, and that means Tacoma, Franklin Pierce. Granite Falls, South Kitsap, San Juan Island, and Coopville. And and this bargain did just that, brought them into the top three. And many of our positions are in the top, very top of the category, and so I'm very very proud of the work we've done with them. We continue to, I believe, provide compensation that. Recognizes the value and contributions of our classified staff and is really. In line with all of our other staffing groups in terms of and recruiting the best the best staff possible because. We feel that that is actually going to provide the best supports for kids. So competent compensation resulted in a 2.1. Well, first of all, it it brought in. The office managers, secretaries, and registrars. Up into the top three. All of her, all other salaries were already top three. So office managers, secretaries, and registrars were brought up to the top three. And then after that, an additional 2.1% was provided to all the ESP members for year one and then a 2.3%. For all members in year two, it's a two year contract. And you kind of overall, once again, I believe the collaboration was. Was really strong during the time closure. You know, we're all juggling many, many balls and. I'm just glad to say that. We we had a great collaboration. That collaboration continues even as we as we open schools. Our our board probably knows this, but our our classified members support students in many, many different ways. And so it's it'd be interesting to 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 kind of spend a day in the life of, so. I I would like to take this moment right now. I Elizabeth is here and I I think, you know, a couple of other members of this team are here. If if any of you would like to speak up and say any words, that would be totally appropriate and would love to see hearing here from you as well. I know I'm putting you on the spot because I didn't say I I didn't I didn't saw that Elizabeth, you were unmuted, so I didn't know if you wanted to speak or not.
No, I didn't, but yeah, I just thanks to your team and our team and. We're happy it's over. It was it was a long haul and I bargaining by Zoom is very, very difficult, so. But we've done it.
That's right, right. One for the record, that's for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I would also like to dive in briefly and just say that. One of the reasons, number one, yes, doing it by Zoom definitely lengthens the process, but I also think. That we as a as a team as a whole, we're willing to dive into just some of the niggling things that had been out there that had created confusion or conflict in years past. To kind of dig down deep and do the language work that had been put off for a number of years. And that does take time and it does take commitment and it takes a lot of energy. And I think this is a group that really collaborated well on coming to. Solutions around those kinds of problems that seem so small at the time and can actually result in bigger problems down the road. So I want to applaud everybody for that.
Wait, what's the size of the bargain unit and the increment, cost increment to the district?
I don't, Amy, what's the size? The first year cost is 52,000. I think the second year cost is 54 or 55.
And I don't have it directly in front of me or putting me on the spot. And Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say 47 members, 42 members?
We have 46 members.
Ah, I was close.
Nice.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone who worked on that. Thanks to our our best members, a critical part of what's happening with our kids, whether we're in remote or in person, so we appreciate you for sure. All right, that will bring us to the consent agenda.
I moved.
Second that.
Slade, wait, I'll say yes, but Slade, what's in Fest Ed? They gave a donation. Sorry, didn't know it's late, but I'm just curious. Do you see where it is, Jody? It's down the bottom. Go down.
Turn attachment.
There it is.
I remember getting the email and the letter.
It's great. Thank you.
Right.
$590.
I don't remember.
Greg, Greg has the answer.
Greg.
$590.
Yeah, this is an organization that is, they they get funding from lots of different private donors and they donate money to schools from around the state. For students on free and reduced lunch for various needs that come around and so. If they they provide some sorts of matches that that happen, and so I I believe that's what this matching fund. That has come around and it's basically to support our most at risk.
Yeah, great. Wow, how cool.
Hey, I have I have a plan.
Always have that free money draft. All right. Are we done with this one?
Did we vote? We didn't vote on.
Are we ready to vote now?
Yeah.
I thought Slade was going to say something else in there, so looking at Slade. Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and do we have any new business tonight?
I just really want to give a shout out to our interpreter, Stacy, who I've been going back and forth and listening to the Spanish. This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks to Jody for helping us get that all worked out for this meeting. It's really fantastic. Jody, thanks again for piloting so expertly as you always do. We couldn't do this without you, like literally, thank you. So much. And with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn at 9:46 PM. Thanks, everyone who joined us. If you have any questions, you know where to find us.
Thank you. Thanks, board members. Thanks, directors. Thanks, principals. Thank you, Millie.